Colonel, this is the beating of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Fudge of Legions? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make changes to the agenda? Very well. Next item on the agenda is proclamations. Since June 13 through 16, 2018 is Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week. The town would like to recognize this for the proclamation. Is there anyone here from the Wild West Rodeo Association to receive this proclamation? There was supposed to be, so there'd be another one here. I will go ahead and read it. Whereas the Southwest Horsemen's Association and High Low Pro Rodeo will be presenting the first New Mexico bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo in Silver City, New Mexico, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is celebrating its 28th year in Grant County in 2018, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo reflects the western heritage and history of Silver City, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is an important step in the process of improving the economic viability of New Mexico in the sporting world. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim the week of June 13 through June 16, 2018, as the first New Mexico bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week, and urge all citizens to attend and enjoy the rodeo. The next item on the agenda is council comments. First is Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just very short things. Thank you to the chief, our chief, and to Kyle for fixing the problem downtown. One other thing also is that for the Blues Festival, there at the golf park, I don't know if it's feasible or not to say it at this time, but I saw way too many animals, too many dogs down there in the park, and I don't know if it's allowable, if they have enough. I guess what you call the service animals would be okay, but there was way too many of them. And anyway, it was a good weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Aiman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. First, I want to encourage the public to go check out the crosswalks. They're on the corner of 12th and Virginia. This past weekend, Diana Ingolzleba and her hard-working intern Patty Countryman painted designs as the pilots of the Art in the Crosswalk projects. They're really cool. And I helped by being a gopher, not as artistically inclined as others. But please go by and look at them. They're really a pilot project to see how visible their designs are, whether or not it slows down traffic, which it seemed to be doing on that day, and to see how well the paint lasts. The second thing I have is that according to the today's paper, the Silver City Police Department will be conducting saturation patrols and checkpoints for driving while impaired, buckling up, and selective enforcement, including texting and cellphone use while driving. I really am proud and pleased to hear that because while I was gophering at the Art in the Crosswalk project, I counted at least a dozen cars where people were talking on their phones and texting on their phones. So I know that it's epidemic, so I'd like some of that to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Beston.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to thank everyone who worked on Saturday, June 9th, at the District 1's Territorial Charter Day at Hidden Park. Thanks especially go to the young men from Gary Staley's, I think it's the JPPO, is that, okay, group, Gary, Michelle, I think it's Sam, that is the gentleman that is, that also helps, and the mayor. Because unfortunately, and I'm going to do it this way, so you don't think I'm not doing a bad thing, I broke my fingers in a workplace accident, both middle fingers last week. So that's what happens when you fall and you try to catch yourself with your hands, apparently. So it may seem on a quick glance that much was done or accomplished up there, but we made a substantial debt. We created contour terracing to direct water away from erosion patterns near the basketball court. We painted metal benches, and I shouldn't say we, they, painted metal benches, killed red ant nests near a sandbox, and cleared away cacti from the sandbox and basketball court areas. So there's several ideas that were proposed for this unique hidden park, which is truly a natural wilderness area in the upper part of District 1. The mayor suggested painting a pickleball court on the basketball court so we could have multiple uses, which is a great idea. It's a nice little quiet place to do that. And I suggested creating a hiking and mountain biking trail in cooperation with our trails group JPPO and the Aldo Leopold Trails Group, clearing trails of dangerous dumps and rocks and defining existing trails a little bit better because this unique park's rugged topography really lends itself to, naturally, to such a combined hiking and mountain bike trail. It'd be kind of a unique thing right there in the middle of the area, and it would probably one of the most quiet activities that could occur, given that there's houses surrounding it almost all the way around. So I think that, you know, without, right now, there's like an old slide and there's a number of old sort of equipment that seems to have been spread around by folks. So we're gonna, I would suggest that we remove that because safety-wise, none of that really works and it's good for us to have out there. And we just didn't have the chance to even pull down some of the things that were sort of safety hazards. So I just want to say that those are some of the suggestions. I know that Mr. Staley is going to try to pull the neighbors working with the Assistant Town Manager to see what things that they want. We want to make sure they still have the access that they have to their backyards because what's really nice in that little enclave is they all have access into hidden parks. So there's a lot of people already walking and using the trails that they've established that way. It's just that we have to get rid of some of the hazards that are in some of those trails that they've created. I agree with Councilor Ray. The Blues Festival was really a wonderful time, and as you know from the proclamation, the pro rodeo starts around the corner. July 4th is coming up with the Chamber of Commerce Parade and the Silver City Museum's Ice Cream Social. And I wanted to invite everyone, I put a few flyers out, you'll hear more about this. WNMU Museum, the University Museum in Fleming Hall, is having unlimited preview on Friday, July 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. only. And then we will close again to continue our transformation. And this is in joint celebration of the Clay Festival and the continuing transformation that we're undergoing at Fleming Hall. We want people to see the space. It's absolutely amazing. There's so much light that if you've been in Fleming Hall before the renovation, you will be astounded by how beautiful it is when you walk in and how it's not dark and dank. It's all open and airy and quite nice. So that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Beston.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing is, many of you can see, I have, I'm back in the wheelchair. I had surgery last week, so for the next month or so, if you invite me to an event, I may or may not make it depending on accessibility. I'm still able to do meetings and things though, so please contact me if you need me. For those at home, you can't see, we have a roomful of people here, and that's really awesome to me. I love when we have a roomful of people. I know many of you are planning to speak this evening, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say, and I know we'll all be considering what you're saying very seriously. And then the last thing, I just have a question for Mr. Brown. I've had several people ask me when the Golden Dragon Building is going to be done because it's still an eyesore and it's getting out of hand, it's on some weekends, so I know it's been over six months now, so.
The contract gives them years to get usable space inside up to code.
Okay.
It gives them two years to get everything put together.
Okay, so they're not using it as usable space right now, but right now they're having like yard sales in the middle of the week and in the weekends, they had one during Blues Fest, there was junk all over the sidewalk, so I don't know if that's something.
That's not something they should be doing.
Okay, alright, thanks.
I'll have code enforcement check that out.
Alright, thank you.
Any other council comments? Councilor Beston?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilor Beston reminded me, especially with accessibility. If you send me an email, it's really hard for me to type right now, and I will try to answer you. It'll take me a while, and then I'll say, please apologize for all the typos because both these fingers, they, you know, it's just to say it doesn't work well right now because of where I broke them, so, thank you, Mayor.
Any other council comments?
I just have a few comments. I'd like to thank all of those who were volunteers and helped to make the Family Fun Day this past Saturday a real success. There were hundreds of kids out there at various activities, and it took a lot of people to organize that. So I'd like to thank all of those who made that possible. This past Saturday, as Councilor Beston said, we had a territorial charter community work day in the hidden park, and even though Councilor Beston, both her hands were injured, she still was there and she helped out as much as she can. She was a real trooper. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 22, 2018 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Aiman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am moved to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of May 22nd, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Beston?
Ms. Ray, second to motion stated.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public input. If you signed up for public input to talk about one of the items on the agenda, then I'm going to ask you to wait until we get to that agenda item before I ask for the public input on that particular, on that particular item. So as we get to that, I will, I will let you know when it's time for public input. I have both sides of a sheet of names, and some people didn't put what the subject matter was. Is there anyone here who wishes to give some public input on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, well, then we will come back to that soon. The next item on the agenda is reports. We will get an update of the Holloman Air Force Base F-16 training over the Gila National Forest by retired Colonel Susan Beck, and her husband is here with her, and I'll turn the podium over to her and let her proceed with her report.
Let me see if I can turn this on. Can you hear me? Great, thank you so much. Mayor Ladner and councilors, thank you so much for inviting me today or for accepting my request to speak to you. I really appreciate it. As you said, I am a retired Air Force Colonel, and I did actually work with F-16s during my career and systems that surround F-16s, so I think I have a little bit of expertise to share with you, and would be glad to advise you on this in the future. Last Friday, I made a visit to Holloman Air Force Base to receive briefings and tours from leaders there about their F-16 training. Before I share what I learned about during the visit, I want to thank the many people in this community who helped me get up to speed quickly on the issues involved with Holloman's F-16 fighter training, and the possibility of this training expanding over the Gila and Grant County and other areas nearby. I thank them personally, so I won't mention their names, but I couldn't have done this without their support. I decided to initiate the visit to Holloman Air Force Base because I can see that in our community, there are many questions about what's happening, some misconceptions, and a lot of concern about the issue. It is my intention to answer as many questions as I can to help turn around these misconceptions and to suggest a way forward that is constructive and may directly impact the outcome of this issue. There's a lot I could share after spending an entire day at Holloman. It was a pretty impressive day. I'm always happy to be back on an Air Force Base. But I'm aware of the time constraint this evening, and so I'll be as brief as possible. I'll give you a short update, and I'll try to leave some time for questions. I'm willing to meet with you on another occasion if needed to expand on this issue, and I'll also be glad to answer any questions that you might have in email or in person. Just let me know. Ann Mackey actually has my email address since I've been corresponding with her. To begin, I want to briefly update you on Holloman and F-16 training. As you know, the Air Force has a significant pilot shortage, currently about 2,000 pilots. The F-16 fighter represents a large portion of the Air Force fleet. Therefore, a lot of the pilot shortage is F-16 pilots. Air Education and Training Command has expanded F-16 training to reduce the pilot shortage by activating a third squadron of F-16s under the 54th Fighter Group at Holloman. And this happened in August of 2017. The squadron will be fully operational later this year, but it is already participating in F-16 training right now. The 54th Fighter Group, which is actually from Luke Air Force Base stationed now on an interim basis at Holloman, will be joining the Holloman 49th Wing in October of this year, so they will actually become part of the wing. Currently, the 49th Wing's mission is the operation and maintenance of training on remotely piloted aircraft, specifically the MQ-9 Reaper aircraft. They will be adding the responsibility for the F-16 training mission when the realignment is complete this October. So right now, Holloman does not actually own that mission, they are just support to that mission, and that was something I found out that I was not aware of when I went there. The F-16 fighter has in recent years received a lot of upgrades, some very significant upgrades, including a new longer-range radar and sensors that enable pilots to detect enemy aircraft and strike enemy targets and aircraft at much longer ranges. This has brought about the need for expanded airspace to support pilots in learning how to use these new F-16 features to perform their mission. So now I'd like to talk briefly about the current airspace available at Holloman to give you a perspective for them. While there, I learned several things. First, Holloman seems to be doing all it can to optimize the use of existing airspaces, including White Sands Missile Range to do its F-16 training. The Holloman schedulers work daily with Wismer, White Sands Missile Range, to make the best possible use of all airspace there, but it is a challenge scheduling the training there at Wismer. The main reason is that by law, Wismer is a multi-service test range whose primary mission is the support of missile development and test programs for the Army, Navy, Air Force, NASA, other government agencies, and private industry or private contractors. The Holloman F-16 training mission or any other mission is secondary. F-16 training is impacted by Wismer's primary mission because even though they may schedule F-16 training at Wismer during a particular day, if a test slips, their training may also get slipped or even canceled, significantly impacting a day's F-16 training as well as the completion of their training syllabus. Also, there are days and times when Wismer is closed to air traffic depending on what type of test is being conducted there. As I said, Holloman is coordinating very closely with the Army for the use of airspace over Wismer and for the use of other airspace nearby. Interestingly, another challenge is the fact that Wismer's scheduling is not currently computerized. The Air Force is actually providing funding and leading the effort to automate Wismer's scheduling to maximize the use of Wismer for F-16 training. Holloman's leaders hope to have this project completed later this year. Wismer, along with other airspaces nearby, seem to be aware Holloman would prefer to do the majority of its F-16 training since it's close to the base and will fulfill the goal of minimizing transit time and maximizing training time. Now, there are some other training areas that they use, for instance, for aerial refueling which are north of Wismer, so they're not using all of their time on Wismer, but a majority of, or a lot of the time is there. I assume that you're all familiar with the two proposals that have been made by Holloman, so I have a map. Would you like to see the map, or are we all clear about that, and I should just go on? I just want to make sure. Okay. You would like to see it or go on? Okay, great. See the map?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. They provided me with a rather large map, which is available if you'd like to see it later. But basically, you're familiar with the two alternatives. As far as the other airspaces which Holloman controls, this airspace will only accommodate part of the F-16 training syllabus. That's why Wismer is so important, and also why Alternative 1 in the current proposal, the expansion of Talon, the Talon Military Operating Area, is so important. Of course, it's close to Holloman, as you know. As you also know, Alternative 2, the expansion of the Cato and Smitty MOAs here in our area, and the creation of the Lobos MOA is also being considered. One thing to know is that the airspaces in Alternative 2 are not controlled by Holloman. Cato and Smitty are actually controlled by the New Mexico Air National Guard, and the two airspaces south of them, Reserve and Morancey, are controlled by the Arizona National Guard, which would most likely also control Lobos since it would be nearby, if it was established. Currently, Holloman does not fly any of its F-16 training missions in these airspaces or on the low-level route that exists nearby. There's a lot more I could say about F-16 training and airspaces, but I need to move on now because of time. I want to finish by briefly discussing the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA process, and what we here in Silver City and Grant County need to do to engage in it. Headquarters Air Force in the Pentagon is conducting a regional airspace optimization program for bases across the country. The Air Force has recognized that much of the airspace now in use was designated many years ago and has not been revised to take into account newer missions and operational requirements of significantly upgraded aircraft and systems. Phase 1 of this regional airspace optimization program includes changes to the airspace that is needed for Holloman's F-16 training program. The scope of these changes to Holloman's airspace requires the Air Force to go through the NEPA process. And now what I'd like to say about this is that while some people believe that Holloman is the one which is actually leading the process, that is not actually the case. It's actually being led at Headquarters Air Force. And so we're, when we're working on the NEPA process with them, we're actually working with Headquarters Air Force. The NEPA process is a very objective deliberate process that the Air Force must go through in a very disciplined manner. The environmental impact statement is the most intensive level of NEPA analysis. An EIS is a detailed written statement that fully discloses the environmental impact of a proposed action and reasonable alternatives. It involves more formal preparation and processing than other NEPA analyses, and engages stakeholders and the public through meetings and scoping comments on the front end, and hearings and comments on the draft and final EIS on the back end. So throughout the process, there is an opportunity for the public to bring to light information that the Air Force should consider before making its final decision. The Air Force is actually still in the scoping process for the Holloman airspace changes. They have received numerous scoping comments, including many from Grant County residents and groups. These are being factored into the draft EIS. One of the things I learned during my visit to Holloman last Friday is that the draft EIS, which was due to be posted for public comment this fall, is expected to be delayed, possibly three months or as long as six months. So we probably won't be seeing that as we thought we might in September, but it will be possibly December, January, and maybe even a little bit later than that. This delay is actually good for Grant County. I believe we need to do all we can now to educate the Air Force on what they don't know about Grant County and the areas surrounding it, the wilderness areas that are so important to us. And one of the things I want to say, just breaking with my actual statement here, is that when I was in the Air Force, I was stationed in Albuquerque. That's how I came to love New Mexico. That was many years ago. But the thing about it is that when I was stationed in Albuquerque, I had no idea Grant County or Silver City existed. You know, it was just not on my radar scope. So, you know, and I'm sure there are many people at Holloman that are in the same boat. They don't know what they don't know, and if you think about it, if the people in Albuquerque and the people at Holloman that are stationed there just for a few years at a time don't know, then the people in the Pentagon certainly don't know a lot about us here. So it would be difficult, if not impossible, for the Air Force to discover all the information that we know about this area at a distance. We have an opportunity, even a responsibility, to share everything we know about this area that should be considered by decision-makers in the Pentagon. I highly encourage the council as well as Silver City and Grant County residents to take advantage of the draft EIS delay and move forward with deliberate speed to educate the Air Force on everything they need to know about Silver City and Grant County so they can make an informed decision. I know the Air Force wants to hear from Silver City leaders and citizens on this important issue, and the leaders at Holloman agree with that. It is a crucial part of the NEPA process. To ensure inputs are included in the NEPA process, leaders and residents must submit inputs through the Holloman EIS website or mail comments to the address that's listed on that website, which is actually in Hampton, Virginia. That's where the contractor is who's compiling all the inputs that we send in or the comments. One more thing. Holloman is ready to host local leaders for a visit to the base to get to know more about their mission down there and how they accomplish it. So please let me know if you're interested, and I'm sure I can set up that visit for you. Thank you for this time this evening, and I look forward to further meetings with you on this topic in the near future. One thing I'd like to say before I open up to questions and answers is I've also been invited to present more detail about this issue tomorrow night at WNMU's JRC auditorium. And that's at 6:30, and you're all invited, and of course, I'll have a lot more detail there. And everyone, the public, is invited to that, so please feel free to come. Any questions that I might answer for you at this point in time?
Councilor Labor. Councilor Aiman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation. The question I have is for you and for Grant County, and that is you said that this is an opportunity for us to provide the information that might not, they might not know that they don't know.
Exactly.
So I understand that important aspects are the economic impact, educational impact, impact on endangered species. What other bits of information really might we know, and we know that so much that we don't even think about it, that we need to tell them? What do you see?
Well, obviously, environmental issues are key, and you are, I know, very aware of veterans issues as well. Any issue that would impact the economy, any issue that would impact the children, for instance, you know, or there are issues that might impact the children. One of the things to know also is that, you know, I live sort of out in the boondocks in the middle of the Gila National Forest out there. I don't actually live in Silver City, although I have a Silver City address. But they don't know where the residential areas actually are because we're spread all over the place. So you might think in terms of, you know, where are people living? Now, I want to say though that they do actually come out, although we can help them with this, they do actually come out with light aircraft and other ways of surveying where the population centers are, where the schools are, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, again, because some of these are sort of buried in the forest or, you know, in other areas, they may or may not come across those. So the more we can make them aware of what's actually here, you know, because to them, it could just look like a big, you know, area of forest on a map, and it's easy to just draw an ellipse there and say, oh, this looks good, you know, but not knowing what's there. I mean, how could you even begin to find it on the internet? Endangered species might be something that we might look at, wildlife, you know, also recreational things such as birding and hiking and camping, and I know the horsemen are very, very concerned about this issue. Ranchers might also be interested in this, so it might be important to draw them together. I will be willing and have volunteered to provide briefings individually to any group that wants to, wants to hear about it. Again, there's a public meeting tomorrow night, but I realize that not everyone can get there, so if there is a group that's interested in hearing from me, I'll be glad to provide a briefing. So those are just a few of the things that come off the top of my head. I'm sure if we went into a brainstorming session, you know, one of the things, we could come up with much more, one of the things about it is that you all know a lot more about it. We moved here actually in September of 2016. So I'm So I'm not the most experienced person in the area, although I'm learning a lot and very quickly. Questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Colonel Beck. Would you introduce your husband to the council?
Yes, I certainly will. This is my husband, Randy Katrin. And interesting that his name is Katrin since Katrin County is right next door to us. He can probably tell you some stories about that at another time. But he is, he's my right hand, my left hand, and above and below, so I appreciate him a lot. Thanks for the opportunity to invite him.
Thank you, Katrin. The next item on the agenda is a report by Fire Chief Milo Lambert on fire restrictions.
Mayor, Council, it's hot out today, and it's awful dry. We have enacted basically stage 2 restrictions in the town. We have enacted what is the extreme drought and local fire condition upgrade from what we had last month. This restriction is quite extreme. There's no allowed building or maintaining of campfires, use of charcoal grills, stove fires, or any other open fire in a recreational or cooking purpose outdoors within city limits. Following suit from the previous restriction, there's no burning of yard waste. We're not issuing any burn permits. The biggest change in this is the sale and use of all possible prohibited fireworks has been enacted. Now, a point of clarification, that does not mean that fireworks are banned in their The state law prohibits a municipality from banning all fireworks in a blanket statement. We have fought this for a decade, at least. We do not have the ability to ban fireworks in their entirety. So I've banned every form of firework that we can legally ban. I called the typical firework that comes into Silver City is provided by TNT Fireworks. I called their Regional Vice President, Ian Lubick, we had some long phone conversations. She has agreed to neglect to send some of the more problematic fireworks into our area, even though we don't have the right to ban them. So we have enacted this extreme drought fire restriction to the best of our ability. Now, what I'd like to bring, and I discussed this with Counselor Amen before the meeting, what I'd like to bring to your attention is that someone is actually igniting a fire in your neighborhood, any citizen should feel free to contact Central Dispatch. The biggest opportunity for us here is to educate the public. Many of them are not going to get this notice. It has been posted in multiple public buildings in town. Every city building has been faxed copies of it, and they're posted. It's on the radio, it's in the newspaper, it's on the public service line at the Silver Fire Department. There's still going to be people out there who do not get the message. So don't hesitate to call Central Dispatch. The idea is not to immediately penalize these citizens, it's to educate them on current conditions and stop them from making a bad decision. So the Silver City Fire Department is more than willing to make house calls and educate the public for their own safety. As soon as conditions improve, hopefully, there should be rain this weekend. If it rains all weekend, I still don't see it bringing us out of this extreme drought fire rating, but it will help. So as soon as we have the opportunity to safely lift these restrictions, we'll do so. But I came tonight mainly to present them so that it's just one more avenue for me to present this to the public. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I have a question for you, Milo. You indicated no outdoor fires.
Yes, sir.
Within your prerogatives as chief, and this was after recognizing that municipalities have limited jurisdiction to prohibit the sale of fireworks, but there is no such limitation on the right of a municipality to ban the ignition of those fireworks?
You are correct. What we have put in this fire restriction is lighted matches, cigarettes, cigars, or other burning objects shall not be discarded in such a manner that can cause the ignition of a combustible material.
So the lighting of a firework is that, an ignition of a combustible material?
Yes, sir.
So what you're saying is the ignition of a firework is banned?
The ignition of an ignition source for a firework, as the city municipality does not have the right to restrict the sale or use, but we can restrict the use of the ignition of an object?
Like a match.
Like a match, to ignite a firework.
Thank you, Chief.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
We'll move right on to new business. Counselor Esser.
The chief, I think, has something, a report. I think he was gonna...
He wasn't on the agenda, but all that had happened.
I think he was gonna say a few words about a few things.
Mr. Brown, what do you know?
Yeah, I'm not here to discuss. I'm giving an update from the last meeting.
Sure. I forgot about that. The last meeting, when we had the complaints?
Okay. Okay. Just real brief, I want to give an update on a certain area that we had talked about. Since then, we have seized over a pound of methamphetamine. We're able to get intel information. Several arrests have been made. But I also want to make the public aware that not only the task force we're using as a resource in town, we also have another resource that is here that I have personally spoke to. So I want to make everybody aware of that. So there are some other areas within the town. Of course, there are priorities, and we're continuing to be aggressive on the drug issue that we have. The victim notifications, I just wanted to give you an update on that real quick. We did have something in place from speaking with the mid-level supervisor as far as victim notification, but I went ahead and put like a tracking system in there so that way we can ensure documentation that victims are being notified. What this does, it also helps with case management to check for progress on the victim's case. The Acting Captain Investigations right now is ensuring that the Acting Sergeant does do spot checks on the detectives' cases and will initial and document that the victims are being notified. So hopefully, this alleviates some of the issues that we're having as far as victim notifications.
Yes, that was it. Well, that's basically one, all up on what was said last week. And then I sent you out some information this last week by email. And I asked Captain Portillo, rather than sending out, well, Chief Portillo. Is that, you know, he puts out the weekend report. Well, the department had been putting out the weekend report, and it doesn't look like we're really busy all the time. But I asked him to start putting out weekly reports based on what happened the whole week. And as you can tell, these guys are very busy. If you look at the stats, the numbers of what's happening, they're probably by themselves as busy as all the departments in the county combined. So we've got to, you know, give them props for all that they do and not just complain about it. So.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions or comments for Captain Portillo?
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. The next item on the agenda is new business, item 11. The first item is 11A, the approval/disapproval of a public celebration permit application and a waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol sales near a church for the Volunteer Center of Grant County's Uncommonly Good Evening event at 501 East 13th Street, Silver City, New Mexico, on June 30, 2018, with alcohol service from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. Who's going to present this? Please come forward and identify yourself, please.
My name is Kristen Isasal. My name is Kristen Lundgren. I work at the Volunteer Center. So do you want more information about the event? I've never done this before, so I don't really know how it goes.
It's the usual.
Okay, great. So the Uncommonly Good Evening is a fundraiser for our food pantry distribution. It'll be an event from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. with hors d'oeuvres and music, a silent auction. The Little Toad Creek will be serving alcohol. They will, so we have a fence around the whole perimeter, and there will be security at the gate and security roaming through the event. There will be risk bans for those who are drinking, of drinking age. And they will be serving from 6 till... She said something, I just spoke with Teresa today, and she mentioned something that I didn't know, which was that there's potentially a preference to have alcohol service end before the end of the event. And so the event ends at 10 o'clock. We had said that the service would be from 6 to 10, but it needs to be changed to 9:30. We're very open to that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Counsel Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the application, it says that the event begins at 6 and ends at 11.
That is actually the... Oh, really?
Yes. And it says alcohol service begins at 6 and ends at 10. So it is before the end of your event, if it does in fact end at 11.
The plan was to end at 10, so that was probably an error.
Okay.
Can that be fixed?
Can I fix that?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, it just comes through the air.
Yes, it hasn't been sent to the stadium. So it can be fixed.
Counsel Connaught.
It's going to end at 9:30 now, just because I'm doing the motion.
The motion would be to approve it with those two amendments, that it's going to end at 10, and the alcohol service will end at 9:30.
Do you have other comments or questions? Thank you. Okay, we're not ready for the motion. The motion does need to include the waiver. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Connaught.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a public celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol sales near a church for the Volunteer Center of Grant County's Uncommonly Good Evening event at 501 East 13th Street, Silver City, New Mexico, on June 30, 2018, with alcohol service from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Liquor license holder, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Your motion is there second.
I'll second that.
Counsel Ray. Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is 11B, the approval/disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District and Clay Festival Dance to be held on July 21, 2018, at Market Street, east of Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, with alcohol service from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 67085, and number 63013, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. And Ms. Lee Gruber will be making this request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. Yes, I am here to make the request for the public celebration permit to be approved. I am the founder and remain as the director of the Clay Festival and will be holding a dance on the 21st and would like to have Little Toad Creek serving alcohol at that event. Any questions?
Counsel Brown, Page Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Could you please explain a bit about the site that you're going to be having this?
It's known as a stub street, and the attempt is being made to use those streets. They're the section of the street from Bullard to the Big Ditch. And by using those streets, we do not affect traffic on the main streets, which is a nice kind of idea. And we're able to easily fence it off and to control people coming and going who are interested in alcohol.
So is this going to be one street or multiple streets?
Just Market, just the stub street on Market.
So just across from the Market Street Bridge, across there?
Yes, and it's just been repaved, and so it's a lovely place to dance.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The street closure permit has been approved too, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Ray.
I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District and Clay Festival Dance to be held on July 21, 2018, at Market Street, east of Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, with alcohol services, service from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Liquor license holder, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 67085, and 63013, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counsel Amy Smith.
May I second that?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I've got a written request for a 10-minute break. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a 10-minute break.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call on meeting back to order. The next item is 11C, the approval/disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1269 and ordinance amending Section 12-7-9 through 12-7-9.9, off-highway motor vehicles, definitions, et cetera, of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as the Silver City Traffic Ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 50-1 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. This item is sponsored by Counselor Ray, so I'll ask for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be the sponsor of this NOI, hopefully. This NOI is gonna ask the town council people to see if we can be able to use side-by-sides on city streets. This NOI, I put in a lot of thought into it, along with some other people. This NOI, I put in a lot of thought into it, along with some other people. One of the things that I'm really stressful is going to be for safety. On your side-by-sides, people need to be educated, just like we have to be educated on it. Some of these... Most of the side-by-sides that I know of are not loud. People say that they're loud, they're not loud. The ones that are loud are the ones that are made for racing or made for the sand dunes. Those are loud. There's other vehicles here that are louder than the side-by-sides. On this NOI, I am proposing that we have seatbelts, which they do. They have to have mirrors, which we can put mirrors on them. They have to have lights, which they already have lights. They have a taillight, which they have taillights on. Signals, maybe so, maybe not. We can use hand signals, and people will probably put signal lights on them. It is up to the city council to post speed limits. We can have tires changed on them. There are businesses out there that will change the tires. They will have street tires approved by DOT. The NABEs will waste right away. They will not destroy the street, and no way will they do it. They will destroy the tires, and I don't think anybody's going to be out there using NABEs on a street tire. One of the things also that I want to do is, if it's possible, is to have it on certain hours. Nowhere before 8:00 a.m. and nowhere after 10:00 p.m. Nobody under the age of 18. You have to have a helmet. If you have passengers, they have to have a helmet on. Everybody that drives one, just like a motorcycle, you have to have safety glasses, seatbelts, like I mentioned before. I'm not pushing for ATVs with a handlebars. I'm pushing for the side-by-sides that have the steering wheel, which would be easier to drive and easier to park. Going down the road, we can always go on the right-hand side, not on the left-hand side unless you're going to a store or foot gas or whatever. Again, seatbelts for all drivers and all passengers. You have to have two stickers to operate on them. One is an O8, and one is on the on-road. And they have to be visible, just like a phone call that you take into the mountains. You have to have insurance. Most people I have talked to have said to have insurance, and I just bought a side-by-side, and I have insurance on it. So, they're not that wide as a car. They're not that heavy as a car or a small car. They have a... They have a mother, which they have to have a mother, just like a chainsaw, because they can start a fire. Again, we have to educate everybody on the usage of the ATVs, and I understand about side-by-sides. And I understand that some people don't like them, and some people like them. I am pushing for this because I believe that if it was to happen, there will be... You're always going to get somebody that's going to be not paying attention to the law. We have all done that. We were all young, and we were all, for lack of a better word, kind of wild. Let's see if we can pass it. If it passes tonight, I already took the opportunity to ask for a public meeting, which will be held next Wednesday night, June 20th, here in this building at 6:00. If it passes, hopefully that we can have a final vote on the first town council meeting in July. So, this is not for me, it's going to be for everybody. Although I am doing the sponsor, hopefully that the town council can take into consideration some things that we have done have benefited a lot of people, and hopefully we can benefit some people here. I understand that the police department will have some issues. We all have issues, and we just have to abide by it. We have to educate everybody that's driving them, and if somebody sees somebody doing something wrong, stop them and tell them. You guys want some freedom here in Silver, here in Silver City? Well, let's help the police department, let's help each other. And with that...
Does the council have any questions for Councilwoman Ray?
I have a lot, but is this the appropriate time?
You want to wait till discussion?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Do you have a point of clarification?
Councilwoman Benson?
Yeah. Councilor, just a really quick point of clarification. You said 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but the NOI says 6:00 a.m.
Okay, the wrong one is 6:00.
It is 6:00, okay. So, I think when discussion comes, I want to ask why 6:00 a.m. versus 8:00 a.m. And we'll wait. I'm going to wait until...
Yes, it's 6:00.
Yeah, I will ask that question under discussion when we get to that point.
Any other questions? Well, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. We're kind of in a unique situation because there are so many people here tonight. We have a city ordinance that limits public input to five minutes per person, but we also have a time limit on how long the public input goes. So, I want to try something new tonight that I've not done before, and I'm going to ask for your cooperation. You've all put a lot of effort to be here tonight, so I want to give everybody who wants to make public input a chance to do that. But I'm going to ask you to be as brief as you can, reconcise, and respect the opportunity for other people to provide input. There was a sign-up sheet, but there was also a flurry of activity at the very end, and so some of these names I can't read. So, the way I'm going to do it then is I'm going to... Whenever you want to speak, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Come to the microphone, speak your name very slowly and clearly so that your lander can get that into the minutes, and then give your public input. So, we'll start now. In the back. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Alec Amboa, and I'm here to support Councilor Joe Ray Jr.'s agenda item, which is to allow the use of ROVs on city streets, legally equipped, of course. Just this Sunday, he took a leisurely drive down to El Paso, the scenic route, down in Columbus, backup Highway 28. One thing that I saw pretty much everywhere I went was ROVs. I thought this is definitely missing up in Silver City, so definitely in full support for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the back.
My name is Jack Harrison. I'm in support of this also. I want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us, but I'd like to throw in there some of the comments that you made about it, that we're definitely going to have a few of the quote-unquote idiots out there. But that doesn't change the fact we still have the same idiots in full-size pickups. So, I think it's up to the community, police department, to almost police ourselves the same way we do in the forest. So, I am also in full support of this.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bergman, Silver City resident. I have questions about one of the sections here, and then I have an objection to a couple of others. In the requirements for ROVs, section 1279.4, it says that the driver must have a driver's license. My question is, what type of license? Is there a special license for ROVs? What do you mean, a regular Class D motor vehicle license? And it also says the driver has to be insured. Is there special insurance for ROVs, or are they required to carry insurance, the same as that covers street, driving on the street? Now, I did meet a gentleman before the meeting who said, "Yeah, yeah, you got to do all that stuff," but I think it would be profitable if there was a state statute to actually include that to make it clear. Now, there is a list of operation and equipment requirements here. You can't be careless, you can't be intoxicated, you can't drive an excess speed limit. Well, that's true of any car, right? So, I'm a little puzzled as to why they are outlined here. Is anything not on this list okay? Okay, so again, says you have to be careful of other drivers, et cetera. So, is that somehow understood, that they have to follow all the rules of the road of a regular motor vehicle? Or are there... If it's not listed here, is it legal? So, does... Do you have to yield to pedestrians and bicycles, for example? Got to be careful of cars. You're on the road, shouldn't you be following all the same rules of the road? So, that's my question here. I think some of these things are a little confusing to me because I don't know what the scope of the rules are for the drivers. The part that I object to is the exception for driving ATVs adjacent to the road. It's section 1279.3.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Okay, so the objection I have is to the part... Is to the exception that allows ATVs to drive adjacent to the road. That's section 1279.3, where it says, "No person shall operate an ATV or other unpermitted off-road vehicle, except under the circumstances described in paragraph C and D herein." Both paragraphs C and D allow ATVs to drive adjacent to the road. It says, "Off-road motor vehicles properly registered of any type or classification may be driven adjacent to a street, yielding to all vehicles entering or exiting the street." Well, what does adjacent to the road mean? In the bicycle lane? On the sidewalk? Do you have to yield to bicycles and pedestrians if you're on an ATV riding adjacent to the road? You're allowed to ride from one area to another to get to a place where it's legal to ride the ATV off-road. Well, if I'm at my friend's house on 19th Street, where we have our ATVs, and I want to go to my friend's house on 10th, where they have private property, where we ride our ATVs, can I drive up Swan Street? That's the shortest route. The town of Silver City developed its bicycle plan to make it safer for people to ride their bikes to save the city pool, high school, the hospital, not so ATVs could use the bike lane to drive around. There's no requirement here, except A to B has to be one place or to another where you can ride. There's nothing here about being properly registered. If there's no registration for an ATV... Is there registration for an ATV? Yep. What does that register? This gives free range for any ATV in any condition, driven by anyone of any age at any time, to drive adjacent to any of the town streets, and I think that's not acceptable. I think 12, those exceptions in C and D need to be removed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There was a hand next to Captain Fortio on the back.
Come on up. Gee. My name's John Vanadder, and I'm in support of it. I think it would be a good source of revenue for small businesses because people are going to ride them more, so require more maintenance, a lot of things, brakes and these kinds of things. I think that'll help with the small businesses here with, you know, paint shops and customizing them, things like that. And I think the same rules could be followed with a four-wheeler or a car, and they're about the same size as a small vehicle. And so, you know, blinkers, these kinds of things do come on them, and brake lights and such. So, I think there's a safety that they do have that are similar to a car, and that's all I got to say. Thank you. And thank you, Joe Ray, for supporting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back, yeah?
My name is Ray DeRan. I came to get informed and educated. Thank you, Councilwoman Ray, for... I'm in approval of this. You know, I don't want to make it a splitting hair issue. I think everyone's opinion is appreciated and certainly should be respected. I think driving the side-by-sides on the road is a lot of common sense, and we're all drivers of motor vehicles, and you know what you can, what you can't do. You know, and the ATVs, sure, they have a bad name right now. They have a black tie, but only because they haven't been used in the capacity that's being asked for now. I think it needs to be given a chance. You know, it's like we said previously, we need to police ourselves, and we need to take care of the wrong as long as the right. It needs to be given a chance, is what I'm saying. I appreciate the opportunity to come over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Carillo, and I am in favor of this, and I appreciate Ray's support. I know that there is a lot of questions, and there is... There'll probably be a lot more clarification needed if the vote is passed. I know that we have some concerns and some questions, as, you know, asked of this woman here. And as far as an ATV versus a side-by-side, and along the side of the road versus driving it on the right side of the road, you know, the license is going to be required, the seatbelts, all the safety regulations that are required in a vehicle, as well as a smaller vehicle. There are also bicycles that are ridden on the side of the road, and we all have an obligation to follow the law. Now, there's probably going to be some, you know, further dialogue that's going to be needed to determine exactly what those laws will be, and it will be our responsibility to drive safely. There are people out there on motorcycles, people out there with small-sized vehicles. There's two of them in the parking lot, and we all have to take the responsibility to utilize these vehicles safely, no matter what type of vehicle it is. So, I am in support, but I do think that there will be further clarification, and there will be... There will need to be defined regulations specific to an ATV... To the side-by-sides that I think we're all going to need to become very knowledgeable on if this is passed. So, I am in favor. I need to appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Yes, my name's Eddie Madrid, and I'm also in favor of the ATVs. I see no difference. We have to pay for a licensed vehicle. If you follow all the rules and regulations, if you were driving a car, no different than those little white things that I saw out there when I came in. That's my opinion, okay? I don't want to bash anybody, but they're not much smaller than that, and we got a large amount of people here that have them and paying license taxes and everything. Get them registered. If you can have seatbelts... If you can have seat belts, signal lights, and everything, side-by-sides, follow the rules, get a ticket, and have insurance, get ticketed the same way if you were driving a vehicle, I think it would be all right. We need to take this a little further, and I'm in favor for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid. Yes, sir.
My name is Kenneth Sexton. I work here in Silver City and have a Silver City address and live just in Grant County, just outside city limits. I'm a retired faculty member of the School of Public Health, University of North Carolina. Part of my training is occupational safety. So when I reviewed the proposed document, I was concerned about...
Could you move a little closer?
Yes, I'm sorry. When I reviewed the document, the proposed amendment, I was concerned about the lack of detail of the descriptions of the actual safety equipment on these vehicles. And I'm going to leave you with the first two pages of a report from the Federal Consumer Product Safety Commission, published in the Federal Register. This is a document that's 70 pages long, so I'm not going to try to summarize it. But they reviewed 430-some accidents. 230 were fatal, and a large fraction were resulting in life-changing events. What comes out of the report, this report is a proposal for rulemaking for making the vehicles safer. So during the last 15 years, they have become safer. And so I was concerned that in this ordinance that is being proposed, that there should be some guidance from the state of New Mexico on whether newer vehicles should be insisted upon having the newer safety equipment, older vehicles being banned. And I suggest, I mean, I suspect that the state of New Mexico thought that each city would make a decision on this based on some recommendations, and part of it might be the size of the town itself, the density, the population, the traffic. So I'd like to leave you with eight copies of the first two pages of this report for you all to review. Where should I leave this? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Scott Terry. The reason why I stood up is because I would say, four years ago, we never got any calls asking if this was available in this town. I will tell you that we don't get a whole lot, but we do have people who want to come here as tourists who ask us about it because they have them behind their RVs and want to come visit. And, you know, times are changing, things are happening. We're seeing this more and more in other places around the country. Time to like the fact that it's good we now got the electric charging station because we have people asking about that. There was no place to charge cars. So looking toward the future, I think we're going to see more and more folks using side-by-sides as they travel, and it might be one of those things that would be good for this community so that those folks who do pull them behind their RVs have the ability to come here and use them while they're here. Thank you.
My name is Tony Garcia, and either talking about safety, most of your side-by-sides are safer than most of those little cars. They don't just have a seat belt, they have harnesses, they have roll bars, and they have a lot of safety that some of these other vehicles don't have. And as far as our neighbors, Arizona and Texas, they use them all over the place. Most of these vehicles are owned by older people because they've gotten pretty expensive. The kids own... Their parents will let them use them, but usually it's the adults that own these vehicles. So they are pretty safe, and I'm in favor of it. I want to thank Mr. Ray for sponsoring this again. I've been here before, and like he says, they're not as loud as a lot of other things. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next. All right, ladies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I just have three suggestions.
Could you pull the microphone away?
Yes, I just have three suggestions, really briefly, to amend a few problems. And I'm sure that as council looks at this ordinance, that they're noticed that you'll probably have some constructive content changes. But I don't think very many. As the first speaker suggested, issues regarding right-of-way pedestrians, bicycles, that language probably should be inserted someplace in the ordinance because right now, it does certainly appear that ATVs don't have to yield. Because without trying to make them complicit with all of the vehicle right-of-way rules and regulations, which would be anathema, you do need to, I think, address those issues, particularly in relationship to public safety and accidents. So that would just be one constructive change. I think the other concerns regarding 12-7-9.3 and Section C, as to whether or not that stands alone and somehow doesn't require or embed all of this stuff that's in the next entire section on operation and safety, can be easily amended by simply adding at the end of that section, Section C, that it says, excuse me, under Section B, only as permitted under the circumstances in Paragraph C and D herein, blah, 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 and the exemption, and 12-7-9.4, operation and safety requirements. So it's clear that the entire ordinance applies to all the other options. The only other thing that I think you might look at, and this is kind of like, don't mean to be a grammar Nazi being an English feature, but it's like that old phrase that's often on posters, "Let's eat, grammar." So if you've got the comma after "let's eat," then you're good. But if not, it implies something totally different. So if you look at, there's a contradiction between in 12-7-9.4, between Item 5, Subsection 5, requiring that all drivers be under at least the age of 18, and the actual language in Subsection 8, which says, unless the driver and all passengers under the ages of 18 possess and wear safety helmets. So those two sections on their face are in contradiction. And people can say, well, I've got a safety helmet on, I'm 16, and I'm a driver. Looks to me like the ordinance would let me do that. You can change that and solve that problem by putting in two commas. Don't put them around "driver" and "passengers" because that still wouldn't work. But if you put them where they should be, after "driver," so the paragraph reads or the section reads, unless the driver, comma, and all passengers under the age of 18, comma, possess and wear safety helmets, then you're good. So I think it's a good...
In the front, yeah.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Wey. I live at 406 West San Vicente, which is on Chihuahua Hill. And I was interested to hear Councilor remark about how often you observe people texting while driving, talking on their cell phones. Well, from my front porch, I watch people go up and down San Vicente all day long, texting while they're driving, and frequently running the stop sign at Penas Altos in San Vicente. To me, that's just an example of what I've observed for, well, I've been driving for well over 50 years with only one small speeding ticket. I am a very safe driver, but I look around and I see, it frightens me, how often people drive without their full attention on what they're doing. I think it's commonly known that we're in a real epidemic of distracted driving. Okay, so that's one factor to keep in mind. And apparently, our police force isn't stretched so thin that they simply cannot enforce that law. So I think we're going to be living with distracted driving for quite a while into the future. The second thing that I want to point out is, I admire all the effort that's been put into requiring that these vehicles be safe. However, the one thing that simply cannot be gotten around is the fact that drivers of vehicles see what they expect to see, not necessarily what's out there. Study after study, and particularly in fatal accidents where bicyclists, motorcyclists, pedestrians, you name it, are run into by a vehicle, and the driver says, "I looked, but I never saw it." And so I don't know how you get around that. But I will close by saying, or sharing a little piece of wisdom I got years ago when I was thinking about sailing around the world. I've met a couple in Seattle who had done exactly that. And so I was curious to know if they had encountered, you know, rough times, you know, what kinds of challenges they had. And they said, well, of course, there were rough times, but one thing that they had decided before they ever, you know, cast off to make that trip around the world was that whenever there was a conflict in what route, what maneuver, anything that the two of them, this is a married couple, didn't agree on, that they would always go with the more conservative choice, the safest choice. And they got them around the world. And so I would ask you, as sort of the captain and crew of our town, to think about that piece of advice when you're considering this, that no matter how alluring that other route might seem, and how easy it is to tell yourself, oh, it'll be safe, I encourage you to take that safest decision and to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilors, my name is Kim Clark, and I am here in support of the Notice of Intent, Ordinance 12-69. You had considered this once before, and we have a lot of support this time around, so I'd ask you to really take that into consideration. I think that Councilor Ray has put a lot of time and effort into trying to mitigate any questions that you might have. All motorized vehicles are dangerous, we know that. But I think that Councilor Ray has done a lot of homework on this Notice of Intent, so I would ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. My name is Terry Timmy, also here to oppose this ordinance, both as a citizen and as president of Southwest Mexico Audubon. As you know, we've been before the council a number of times to talk about the intrusion of ATVs and possibly ROVs into San Vicente Creek Trail. And I see passing this ordinance as something that would encourage even more traffic in that area, including going into repairing area where motorized vehicles are not allowed. Also, but I do appreciate Councilor Ray's bringing this up for public discussion, and I learned a lot in researching this. You know, I was the type that I didn't know the difference between a side-by-side or an ATV. And so I've learned a lot about this. And, you know, I found out that there's a organization out there called the Recreational Off-Highway Vehicle Association. It's a not-for-profit trade association, formed and wrote "Safe and Responsible Use of ROVs." And they have a position statement on their website. I'm sorry. They have a position statement saying, "The RHVA emphasizes that ROVs are not designed, manufactured, or in any way intended for use on public streets or highways, and urges that on-highway use of ROVs be prohibited, and law enforcement efforts be strengthened to eliminate this practice." I'd just like to close with a letter that I got from a member of our Audubon Society. They wrote to me, "My husband and I are very concerned to learn that Silver City is considering passing an ordinance to allow the use of ROVs on city streets. We live in Tucson, but we spend our summers in Silver, and are also looking to buy a house and retire there. That is, as long as it remains a quiet town we have come to love. One of the main reasons we chose Silver as our preferred place to get away is because it is quiet in a relative sense, even in town where our house hunting is centered. Noise pollution is a destructive aspect of city life for people and wildlife alike. Believe me, the residents who are disturbed by such noise-producing activity far outnumber the residents who would enjoy it, not to mention the well-documented effect of noise pollution on birds and other wildlife. As birders, we also enjoy the easy-to-get-to San Vicente Creek Trail, although I must admit we were surprised that the town, which so benefits from the wildlife tourism provided by proximity to the national forests, does not do more to protect it. We see much evidence of habitat degradation there, beautiful as it is otherwise, including the apparent use of motorized vehicles on the trails. In short, not to put a fine point on it, if Silver City decides it's a good idea to pass this ordinance, we will be rethinking our future plans, looking for a town that values enjoyable quality of life for all inhabitants. We're sorry, we won't be able at the meeting on June 12. Thank you, Susan Campbell and Paul Katz. Thank you."
Okay. Next.
Howdy, councilors. I'm Dan Arsho from Silver City. Some people are having a hard time getting over their original impressions of three- and There are many misconceptions on the people using them. We are taxpayers, homeowners, as well as business owners, who are very aware of the traffic laws, like many surrounding counties and states. For us, it's a matter of enhancing the quality of our life in Silver City. As far as, I have many friends that have asked questions about the area. Yeah, they'd like to come visit, which in turn means that hotels will be getting used, the restaurants, all types of different services for these type of people. And, yeah, so I'm hoping that we can get this, it's for OHVs, off-highway vehicles. I'm not so sure that we're talking about ATVs. You know, that's a different category right there, especially the side-by-sides. So they're big vehicles, they're quiet, and, yeah, like I say, for us, it's for enhancing the quality of our life in Silver, like a lot of the Southwest is enjoying right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make some public input? Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for the way you conducted the public input tonight. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
First of all, I want to thank all you guys that showed up, and your comments are greatly appreciated, both for and con. And again, thank you guys for showing up. With that, I move to approve a Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1269, and ordinance amending Section 12-7-9 through 12-7-9.9, off-highway motor vehicles definition at that of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as a Silver City traffic ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 50-1, as a municipal code of the town of Silver City, New Mexico.
Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
I'm ready. I think that was considered.
Mr. Connor, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have great concerns about the disorder, this NOI. May I just make my comments in order, and I'll see where they are. First of all, one of the folks who spoke in the crowd spoke about the potential benefit a couple... a couple folks spoke about the potential benefit. I have yet to hear any analysis of actual benefit to the town. I understand that some folks might enjoy riding and might enjoy riding in the forest. And an anecdote about folks pulling their recreational vehicles behind their RVs is interesting, though those RVs mean that there's no hotel rooms associated with that. But I would really like to see possible benefits to the town rather than the individual pleasure of the RV owners as being a cause for this NOI. Secondly, on Section 12-7-9.2, all of the registration and licensing and stickers and sites are handled by personnel that are not town personnel. That's the motor vehicles, or it's, in the case of off-road, if you're not going to try to apply for use on a paved road, it'd be fishing and wildlife. So, the, one of the town entrepreneurs whom I like and respect very much created a big vision and sent it to me in which he said that we could have registration and a sticker program to allow vehicles short-term use within the town. I think he was thinking of other folks too, as a way to fund the additional burden that we know will manifest on our enforcement. So, I would like to encourage Council Ray to explore if other towns have done that and whether or not that would be an appropriate addition here. My next concern is operation of ROVs on town streets, 12-7-9-3. How will a user know what is a town street and what is a state highway? Most folks think that Hudson Street is a town street. It's not. So, the town cannot authorize use on 180, 90, nor 15. Those are actually the ways that people get their recreational vehicles outside of the town limits and to blackways and trails. So, to not make it clear on what areas are highway versus town, I think is something that needs to be addressed. I also am concerned because in the preliminary part of this NOI, we talk about town pathways, including trails, easements, pathways, alleys. I'm concerned that a person who is currently using an RV or plans to use an RV would interpret this NOI and any potential ordinance as thinking it would be okay to operate on sidewalks, town trails, utility easements, or easements toward private property. And so, I think that that's really important for us to realize. We've had a lot of concerns about vehicles going onto trails and just really disrupting and destroying the very fragile ecosystem down at San Vicente Trails. I would like to see a way for us to formalize keeping these vehicles off of trails. You know, I just want to say that when the state changed the law to allow these kind of vehicles on paved roads, it was specifically related to agriculture use. And indeed, when the governor signed it, she made a statement saying that this was not a way to open the door for just every person to be riding in a recreational vehicle on any street. So, all of the mentioning in this NOI about agricultural use doesn't really apply within the town limits. I don't think we have any working farms within the town where we would be needing to go from one part of the farm to another. So, that makes me really uncomfortable. On 12-7-9.3, Highway C, I really want to echo that I can't really see where this commands people to yield or to even obey traffic signals and signs. Having tried to confront a variety of people riding on both ATVs and side-by-sides on Little Walnut and Alabama where I live, and having gotten nothing but being cursed out and a rude hand gesture in response, I really wonder about people's ability to kind of realize that it won't be okay for all of these off-road vehicles to be driven anywhere in the town. Again, I'm concerned with the stuff that talks about driving on the side of the road. If you look up the, all of the stuff in the state that specifically says that's in agricultural areas and the side of the road where an off-road vehicle can be driven must be on the area between the fence of private property and the shoulder of the road. We don't have that on Texas Street. We don't have that in downtown where there are big fields and, you know, sideways stuff. So, I'm very concerned about people reading this and imagining that they would be able to ride on the sidewalk anywhere in town. I'm also concerned about the noise. Now, I understand that there's different requirements. Usually, when folks are talking about noise requirements in a great big area, the manufacturer's level, which is generally set at 96 decibels, might seem acceptable. But in areas of our town, like where I live, any roaring noise going on the street, indeed any roaring noise going on Alabama Street echoes all around. Now, I did a little bit of research, and it looks to me like the most common level of decibel allowance on notices in Colorado and in Oregon and in Utah is 82 decibels. So, I'm really concerned that we are, if this NOI were to pass, opening ourselves up for an even higher ramping up of loud noise in our town. And then, I'm just going to have to say, my largest concern is enforcement. As a councillor, I've made a commitment, and I've said this publicly a number of times, that I am not going to try to pass legislation which will be either impossible to enforce or place such a huge burden on our enforcement capability that we would really need to have more resources to manage it. I don't know if yet there has been any kind of analysis based on usage in other towns or based on expert opinion of our police force about the effects on the enforcement were these vehicles to be running around. I want to point out that even here in this room tonight, even though Councilor Ray clearly said that we would, this ordinance does not allow ATVs, a number of the comments mentioned that they thought it would be okay to have ATVs. So, I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about an increased burden and indeed an impossibility of enforcement. And even though I love the idea of a self-policing, I counted 12 people using their cellphones this week.
We allow all of you to provide input in a respectful way, and we ask that you be respectful to the town council. Continue, Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. Though I think self-policing is the best way to do it, please go talk to the people who keep running up and down Walnut Road, Alabama Street, and the side streets on these kinds of vehicles, clearly when they know they should not. And in fact, I'm wondering if, Mayor, if it would be possible to ask Chief Portillo if he had any comments, because he didn't come forth and public comment.
I don't know.
Yes. Mr. Brown would be okay for the chief to come and speak, because I haven't, I don't know what it is that his stance is or what analysis he's done, but I think it would be important for me to hear.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'll be very blunt, I don't support it. I believe that UTVs are made to be outdoors in the mountains, and as much as I love them and as much as I love the mountains, I believe they should stay out in the mountains. I think it's going to be a public safety issue. I think it's going to be a manpower issue. I've also gotten input from my supervisors and other officers, they don't support it as well. We're adding another additional hazard on the roadways. I believe that we're congested already as it is. I believe that crashes may increase. I believe calls for service may increase, noise complaints. I do believe that even though people say they're not that loud, I still think we're going to have echoes in certain areas of the city and we're going to have problems with that. Alcohol-related crashes is also an issue for me, and overall fatalities. I believe that it could be an issue. So, again, I've gotten input from also the other officers, and I don't see a reason why we should add an additional hazard to the roadway.
Thank you, Congressman. Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you. That's Gessel Alman, Commissioner.
Councilwoman Bassett?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Council Ray for bringing this forward, and I can see that a lot of work has been done. I echo the concerns of Councilwoman Smith, I don't think I need to repeat them, and also of Chief Portillo. I do just want to say briefly that I know that the people in this room are safe drivers. I mean, that's why you're here. That's why you want this to happen in town. I do feel that there is going to be a misunderstanding about the fact that you cannot drive on highways 15, 180, and 90. They have to go through a very specific process through the state, and I can't remember the exact committee, it's like the Highway Committee or something like that. Transportation Committee has to review that and has to permit it. So, the one thing that I want to make sure folks understand is that it's up to the council to request that, not individual folks to request that sort of examination, but that doesn't mean that they can drive from Santa Clara into town. And I think that that's one of the things that we need to think about, is folks understanding that sort of thing. The one thing that I do want to mention is that, as I said before, I know that many of you that are in here, and all of you that are in here, are in here because you are safe drivers, that you do want, you do take responsibility. But just this week, I had someone pull out right in front of my car on 180, and I honked on the horn and I got a rude gesture and then followed. The second thing that happened to me is there was, at 7:00 AM in the morning, a truck that was full of material was coming down Juniper, I live in District 1, so where Juniper stoplight is, crossing over to what turns into 90 and crossing over 180 or Silver Heights Boulevard. This individual realized that they didn't want to be in the right-hand lane, so they switched over and honked before they hit my car into the left lane. They stopped, I saw them look right and left, I thought, "Well, they're just watching the traffic." The next thing I know, he's darting across on a red light. So, I hadn't put my phone in through my car, so I couldn't immediately call, plus I couldn't catch up with him because I was still at the red light. So, there are people that are not watching what they're doing, people running stop signs, pulling out and driving. I just think that there's an additional concern with this. I think that we can work on this, Council Ray. I'm going to send you suggestions for tightening up language. I am concerned about some of the sections that have already been mentioned, so for instance, 12-7-9.3, because if you read that, they don't have to even stop at a stoplight. So, I just, you know, we've talked about the fact that bicyclists don't stop at stop signs, they run through, you know, I mean, those are all considered motor vehicles. And so, I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that we're really explicit about the fact that certain areas, and I would recommend that at least you have the discussion on Wednesday, and begin to tighten up the language a little bit with the town attorney to try to make sure that people don't read more into it than what's here. And I do complain in doing this, I just think it's a discussion that we have to have for a while, to make sure we can get this to the point where we don't, like I said, have people misinterpreting what we want to do. And I think that any information that Captain, I'm sorry, Chief Portillo and the Police Department can provide to assist us with this is going to be really critical as well, since they're the ones that have to enforce it. That's my recommendation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bassett?
Thank you, Mayor. I first just wanted to say that when this came about the last time, I was opposed to it. I was one of the ones who voted no. At that point, I was mostly hoping to see what the county was going to do first, and the county did pass it, and they have not had problems. As far as I know, there has not been an accident, there have not been issues with it. Also, about six weeks ago or so, Council Ray and I attended an outdoor tourism convention, road conference, and we learned a lot about how things like having these vehicles available in a community can really change ecotourism. That's the path of New Mexico right now. That's where we're headed, is ecotourism. And, right, yes, it's a buzzword, but at the same time, that's what we need to look at for our future in this community. And since then, I've spent a lot of time meeting with a couple of representatives, senators, councillors from other communities that are also working on this, and it seems, consensus is that this is where New Mexico is headed. So, I would like to see us pass the NOI. The NOI just means that we continue the conversation for another 15 to 30 days or even longer if we decide to. It doesn't mean that we made a decision tonight, but I think it's important that we continue the conversation. I've been meeting with business owners, with other members of the community, getting their input, and I think we need to continue to do that. Also, I just have not appreciated the tone that the people that drive these vehicles somehow don't know how to drive. That's the impression I've gotten tonight, and I don't think that that's the case at all. I think a lot of the people that drive these are very responsible, and I think we can learn something from the people that have been driving them for a very long time. I also have an issue with the thought that people who drive bicycles in this town should get some kind of special treatment over everyone else. You know, yeah, I have an issue with that. I have a family member who was hit by a bicyclist, and she was driving her car and was hit by a bicyclist who was coming down the wrong side of the road. So, the concept that people who drive this kind of off-road vehicle don't know how to drive, but people who drive a bicycle do, is not acceptable to me. We need to be mindful of all the members of the community. Yes, people who drive a bike should have the right to do that, but why shouldn't the people who drive this kind of vehicle, off-highway vehicle, be given the same opportunity? So, I support you, Council Ray.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. I understand and supported this right here. We've heard a lot of comments against it. Human nature has it that we always take out the bad points. We always give out the bad points. Where are the good points? We haven't tried it. Why can we not try it? Why can we not try it? You're going to dissect these things right here, these NOIs? Anybody can dissect it and read it what they want to read, what they want to interpret in their minds. Is that correct? No, it's not correct, but to them it is. I think a little bit of common sense to having these things here, these ROVs, why not? Why not? People have been saying, you have been saying that people have been going down there on San Vicente. I'm sure they have. I'm not denying that. I've been down there many, many times, walking, and I don't see that many tracks. All tracks? Yes. I see all tracks, just like anywhere else. I see them up on Boston Hill. Are they destroying the land? To some people, they are, but they're enjoying something. Now, I don't think there's that many people that are bird watchers. I don't think so. Using these ATVs, or the RVs, off-highways, why not? It's a quality of life for us. It would be for me. So, how can we stand here and listen to all the negative comments and make a decision? It's a bad decision that we're making. We haven't even tried it, and here we are saying it's dangerous. Anything is dangerous, even walking is dangerous. Anything. Walking the streets, crossing the streets, walking in the mountains, driving a four-wheeler in the mountains, it's, anything's dangerous. So, how can we stay here and say that they're all that dangerous? They're not. They're not. When something is destined to happen, something's going to be destined to happen. We cannot, we cannot foresee that. We can't. We have no power over trying We have no, no power over, or trying to say, hey, don't be doing that. Either people want to do it, let them do it. We're only here for a very short time. We're not here for a long time. Before we know it, we're dead and flat. I knew that, I knew that guy, and he tried to do something bad, or I knew that person, he tried to do something good. So why not? Why not try it? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. You know, it's kind of, kind of down here, hearing you people say that, what you guys said, it is. You know, let's, let's give it a shot. Let's give it a shot. If it doesn't work, then we have nobody else to blame but ourselves. With that, I, I rest my case.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Bassett?
So I just wanted to make sure that folks understood that while I have concerns, I am support, I'm in support of moving this forward for discussion. That's what I want. I want discussion, and I want to see if we can just tighten up a little bit of the language. And I think that that's what, that's what I was recommending. I have some concerns, but I think the language tightening will help. But I do believe that discussion needs to continue, and so I will be supporting the vote to go to the next level. Because it's, as Councilor Connor reminded everyone, this is not the final vote. This is to open discussion on the subject, and that's, that's what I'm supporting, and I am complete supporter of that, Council Ray. I wanted to make sure you understand that while I have concerns...
I understand.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? I have a lot of respect for Councilor Ray, and I appreciate all the tremendous effort that he's put into this. He doesn't give up easily. As a matter of fact, because of his tenacity and stick-to-itness, we now have a ban on handheld phones. Anyway, I would like to see this go forward and have some additional discussion on it. We still have a lot of things to clean up, and I want to be able to hear at some point from the police chief that he's going to be able to handle this with the, with the force that he has. With that, I will call for a vote, and Yolanda, we're only required to do a vote, but I'd like to do a roll call, if you don't mind, so if you would do that for us, Yolanda. No, no, we've got everything you know. So Yolanda, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilor Ray.
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Councilor Bassett?
Aye.
Councilor Raymond Smith?
Nay. I don't think this is ready for the public.
Okay, the vote is three to one, and the motion carries. The next item is 11D, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2018-14, a resolution for the participation in the local government... Oh, y'all don't want to hang around and hear the rest of the story? You don't have anything better to do tonight? Thank you for coming, everybody. We appreciate it. Okay, the next item is 11D, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2018-14, a resolution for the participation in the local government road fund program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation for a chip-sealed and fog-sealed road project. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, this resolution basically allows us to accept a grant that was awarded to us. We've already gone through the process of the resolution to allow staff to apply for it. It was included in the budget because it was awarded to us, but they still want another reaffirmation that we're going to participate. And you've got a list of all the streets that will be covered by this project. That'll be next fiscal year, not fiscal year 19 that we're going to be coming up to, it'll be fiscal year 20.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connor?
I want to approve a Resolution Number 2018-14, a resolution for the participation in the local government road fund program administered by the Department of Transportation for a chip-sealed and fog-sealed road project.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Ray?
A second is right here.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Yolanda.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Councilor Bassett?
Aye.
Councilor Raymond Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye. I'll jump the gun again.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11F, the appointment to the lodger's tax... Wait, did I skip one? I skipped one, okay, yeah. The next item is 11E, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2018-15, a resolution authorizing the submission of a NM Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Department of Finance and Administration for a street and drainage improvement project. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, this is a resolution authorizing town staff to submit an application to the CBG program. In previous, well, until last year, the maximum amount you could apply for was $500,000. This year, the max has been raised to $750,000. So what they do ask is that we submit an application with our, our big projects closer to $750,000, and then a phased project as well. So this project will be up on Chihuahua Hill, basically following the streets that we just did water, water line replacement this last year. The streets are, Daniel from, from Daniel Street, from Roberts to, Daniel Street from Roberts Street to New Mexico 90, Dorothy Street from Roberts Street to Theodore Street, Richard Street from Roberts Street to Dead End, and Theodore Street from Dorothy to, Dorothy Street to Alice Street. The full project application cost would be $748,638.25, and the phased project would be $674,546.54. Our match would be $75,000, which we would put in next year's budget.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-15, a resolution authorizing the submission of a New Mexico Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Department of Finance and Administration for a street and drainage improvement project.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Connor?
I think I'm also seated.
Have a motion, and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please, Yolanda.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connor?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Bassett?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11F, the appointment to the lodger's tax advisory board. The town received one application from Kevin Hubs. The chair of the lodger's tax advisory board recommends his appointment. If there is no objection from the council, I would like to appoint him. He is so appointed. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I'm adjourned.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.